Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Monday, October 27 regular council meeting. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Dewar.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Littler.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Vice Mayor Bales.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Do you all stand for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if we could all just remain standing very quickly, with everything going on in our nation politically and everything that we're seeing with our government currently shut down, I am very grateful for the working form of government that we currently have in the city. I'm grateful for our staff, all of the volunteers who donate their time to make our city run so smoothly, and all of our council members who, while we may disagree, and we disagree very often, surprisingly, we can do so in a very cordial and a very respectful manner. So that way, when it comes time to vote, everyone knows exactly where we stand, and it's easy enough for us to make decisions even when we disagree at times. So I just want to thank all of you for all of that, for being here as I round out my last few months on council. And if we could just take a quick moment of silence to pray for those who are currently really being impacted by this shutdown, who are not receiving their incomes, who may be on a single family or a dual family income for the government, and really need our leaders to come together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have an agenda before us. Is there a motion?
Move we approve the agenda, Your Honor.
Before we do that, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, to add an executive session.
I have a motion and a second to amend the agenda by adding an executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
Move we approve the agenda for tonight, Your Honor.
As amended.
As amended. Of course.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have a set of minutes before us from October 13 regular meeting. Any changes, additions, corrections?
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes for October 13.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes for October 13. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing.
PUD 25-3, excuse me, specific site plan number one. An application filed by Josh Long, 250 Civic Center Drive, Suite 500, Columbus, Ohio. The applicant requests specific site plan approval to allow for the construction of a 790-square-foot beverage business with associated drive-through on 0.64 acres. The property is located at 3919 Colonel Glenn Highway, further described as Book One, Page Nine, Parcel 44 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
The applicant, please.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Jonathan Woker. I'm a planner with McBride Dale Clary. My address is 5721 Dragon Way, Suite 300, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45227. I do have a brief presentation, if you'll bear with me, and go through that as fast as I can. So this is an application for the property at 3919. This is for a proposed Seven Brew Coffee Store. The property is on the south side of Colonel Glenn Highway and also on the north side of Germany Lane. The zoning is CPUD 25-3, which the council approved in August of this year. The existing property is used for a sales lot, and it's a little over .06 acres. As I mentioned, the proposed use is for a Seven Brew drive-through. The developer here is Commercial Site Acquisitions, which is Casto Properties, and I'm the planner of this. Down button instead of up. This is an aerial that shows the property. As you can see, it's currently the used car sales lot. There are multiple driveways on Colonel Glenn Highway. There's an open curb cut along Germany Lane. This is an irregularly shaped triangular property, which has presented some challenges to the site designs for this. This is our survey of the property. Our plan would be to demolish the existing structures on the site and to build the Seven Brew. This is the specific site plan. This is the same layout that you saw as the concept plan back in August. I know Mr. Burkett will go through the plan in detail. Just to summarize, we have an entrance drive on the east side, which is to the right of the slide. We have a one-way circulation system, so customers will enter at the east, at the bottom of the slide, and then circulate around. There will be an exit only at the west side, which is at the left or top of the slide. We have the drive-through service canopy on the north side. Colonel Glenn Highway is to the north. You'll see on this plan that we do not have any driveways on Colonel Glenn Highway, so we've removed those two access points, so all of our circulation will come from Germany Lane. We have two drive-through lanes. The site will have approximately 21 stacking spaces for our customers. Again, that's in two lanes. We have 12 parking spaces, and we have a dumpster enclosure that's shown near the entrance. This use, you may be familiar with Seven Brew. There is no inside service, so you would order your beverage either at the window or they have employees that come to the vehicles as they're queuing on the site. So it's an efficient way to keep customers moving and to provide the beverage service. That means there'd be no order menu, no speaker system. So I think that's important to understand that. They have a touchpad system that allows for the customers, the employees, to take the customer's order. We exceed the stacking requirements of the zoning code. We've worked pretty hard with your city staff on the site design and addressed some stacking and access issues, both with the planning and the engineering department, and we feel that we've got a very good design here that both fits the site but also fits the needs of Seven Brew. So the plan is consistent with the concept plan that was approved in August of this year. We believe will be a complementary use to this area and the surrounding uses. Planning Commission has recommended approval with conditions. We are requesting that City Council approve the specific site plan as well. I am requesting that council consider modification to condition number 18. In your package, there are 19 conditions that are presented, and I'd ask for consideration to change number 18. And if you'll bear with me, I'll kind of explain that. The change isn't real complicated. We're asking that the last sentence of condition 18 be removed. We've talked with Mr. Burkett about this, so he's aware of this request. And my client's concerned that, as written, this sentence raises concerns about the stability of the business and the possibility that their certificate of use compliance could be revoked at any time, creating a sense of instability and uncertainty. We're concerned that the last sentence will negatively impact financing and raise some concerns with our lenders. We believe that Seven Brew has a good operational plan and that we're committed to work with the city to provide and maintain site circulation. So we are requesting that that last sentence be removed. We believe removal of that sentence won't impact your ability to enforce the conditions and the regulations. This condition of having to comply with stacking still applies. However, we do feel that by keeping that sentence, it negatively impacts us by having a negative impact on potential lending situations. So we're in a position to ask for you to remove that sentence. And other than that, the other 19 conditions we are in agreement with, and again, we think we've got a good plan here. So I do thank you for your time, and I'll be ready to answer questions after staff presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, members of City Council. The request this evening is for PUD 25-3, it's specific site plan number one. And again, the applicant's requesting approval to construct two buildings on the .64-acre site in order to run their drive-through coffee shop. There we go. The property is located in the far northwest corner of Beaver Creek, not too far from the intersection of Grange Hall and Colonel Glenn Highway. It's just east of the intersection of Germany Lane and Colonel Glenn. There was a light there previously, and that light's been moved. So now that's a stop sign at that intersection. As the applicant stated, this is an existing used car lot, and the removal of the cars in the building will clean up the site immensely. If council recalls, just to the east of that recently was approved is a Valvoline instant oil change. So that'll take care of the rest of the auto cars that are seen in the aerial photo here. I keep doing that new clicker. This is just another picture of the site as it stands now, with the building that's proposing to be demolished and the cars that are around the lot. The property was rezoned just recently to a CPUD, and among the many uses that are permitted within this PUD is also a restaurant with drive-through service. So what they're proposing this evening is an allowed use within the PUD 25-3. This is the same site plan the applicant pointed out, and he went into pretty good detail about the circulation, where you've got the entrance on the far right side of the site and the exit on the far left side of the site. I just wanted to colorize it so you can see the difference between the mulch area and the brown and the green with the grass area. And then the two buildings will be in orange. The dumpsters to the southeast of that second building. In terms of stacking, as you can see, that they do have quite a bit of number of parking spaces for stacking. I think I counted it at 18 or 19 rather than the 21, but that's just, it's dependent on how close the cars get to each other. And I did it with the maximum-sized car. So realistically, you could probably get closer to that 20, 21 that they're showing. Wrong way again, I think. Sorry, I'm going the wrong way. One of the conditions of approval, as seen in your motion, was that they are to add a sidewalk on the south side of the site along Germany Lane. We had the same thing done with the Valvoline instant auto, so this will connect that sidewalk ultimately to the sidewalk along Colonel Glenn Highway. Also, one of the conditions, there was some concern with, if you can see where the westernmost access or egress point, there was concern about line of sight with people coming in off of Colonel Glenn. And one way that the engineer had suggested to help with the amount of cars that would be stacked back waiting to turn left is to make a right-out-only onto Colonel Glenn from Germany Lane. So that's what we have shown here. This is just a, for instance, diagram that I came up with. It's not engineered, and there probably won't be grass in the middle of it. But where you can create that what they call pork chop in order to require cars to go right instead of being able to stack and go left out on the Colonel Glenn. There's, a light was added at Zinc Road, which is just down the street, so you can go left on the Colonel Glenn at that. And that's, it's to encourage people who want to go left towards the base, towards Riverside, to use the traffic light rather than waiting at this stop sign to go left. The architecture of the building is mainly brick. It's got the blue metal canopies over the drive-through portion of the building as well as over the cap of the building. Pretty much, this is the, this is a picture of the Seven Brew that's out in Beaver Creek already, and they're using the same architectural style as what they have on the existing building. So really, the best way to give you an idea what it's going to look like is show you what it looks like now on the other building. In terms of landscaping, in terms of landscaping, they do show a lot of landscaping along Colonel Glenn and around the interior of the site, which will compare to what's there now, which is no landscaping. I think this would be a big improvement to the aesthetics of the site and to help modernize the site into the type of development that we've seen over the last 10, 15 years. Same thing with lighting. They've got a few lights on the building and then some pole-mounted lights. None of them are in the parking areas, so that they're not preventing cars from pulling all the way up to the curb in the parking spaces. Again, a few select conditions. This is an impact fee district, so impact fees would be applicable to this project. Another one the applicant touched on somewhat was that the, there's a requirement that they don't allow cars to be stacked out on the Colonel Glenn. I know that he asked to remove that last sentence in condition number 18. Even if that condition, even if that sentence were to go, it's still, anybody parking out onto Germany or waiting on Germany Lane is subject to a traffic ticket from the police department. So that's another deterrent. If council wants to remove that last sentence, we'll still be able to enforce that with the traffic laws in place. And they had mentioned that very few times would there be, maybe a couple minutes a day, there might be somebody close to being out onto Germany Lane. So, and that's just based on other stores and the volume that they do. It's not a major road. It's, Germany Lane's kind of a secondary road. It would be a lot more problematic if they were going to be stacking out on the Colonel Glenn. For even five minutes would be a problem on Colonel Glenn. All building mechanical equipment should be hidden from ordinary public, ordinary public view, and that's either in roof forms, because they're going to be on the roof, so they'll have to be mounted, so that you can't see them from the ground. And no temporary signs, and that's particular with this site, because if you saw the used car lot, there's a lot of streamers and banners and other signs that really clutter up the site. And so we do this with most recent PUDs, you know, in the last 10, 15 years, is no temporary signs to be permitted on-site. So Planning Commission reviewed this at their last meeting and recommended approval. Staff has recommended approval also. There are 19 conditions in the motion. And I'll be happy to answer any questions following the hearing.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to come forward and speak to this, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Bob Trout, 2187 Bassett Court. I do appreciate you taking into consideration that they're going to turn it into a right-turn only, which is really good. But I use that street exclusively when I go down to Home Depot and all that. So are you going to be putting a sign down at the far end saying that there's a right-turn only, so at the end of the street, that there's no stoplight there? So if that, you don't do that, you're going to have problems on it when people are going to get their loads from Home Depot and things of that nature and trying to get out. So I think it would be prudent if you put a sign out there that says, "At the end of the street, there's only right turns only," so that they will be able to see it and know that that's the requirement now. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close the public portion and council. It's council, Littler. Councilman Littler.
I have one question for the applicant. If she can answer my question, please. Appreciate your presentation, and I like the coffee shop. I think you do a good job there. I do have a question regarding your request to strike the last sentence. Which part, are you looking, requesting the entire sentence or a portion of this?
So Jonathan Woker, we're requesting to remove the last sentence, the, that says "any failure to prevent vehicle," that whole sentence.
Okay. How about if it was something, because I like the sentence, and I, and I understand that it may not change our ability to enforce some things, but I do believe that this, this lets you know that this is a you problem, not an us problem. Okay? In the sense that I do know that the property on Fairfield Road gets extremely busy, to the point to where there are sometimes where you can't navigate the parking lot well, at all. And it is a true problem. And it is a problem for anybody that wants to go shopping in there. So it becomes not a you problem, it is a problem for the people that want to shop at other stores at that, at that place. And I believe that this sentence does do that. But I think that maybe if it was, if it stated down to the, at least the first comma, "Any failure to prevent vehicle stacking within the public right-of-way shall contribute, constitute a violation of this approval and may result in enforcement action by the city." Period. I don't know if we need to include the suspension, revocation of certificate of use compliance. Would that, do you think that would be a better statement if we struck out the last, after the comma there? We, I would recommend, and I wouldn't have a problem with striking out the, including the suspension, revocation of certificate of use compliance.
Mr. Littler, a couple comments. Yeah. I think that would be an improvement. The suspension, revocation of the certificate of use compliance makes my client very nervous. They're aware of that. I mean, we're in an interesting situation, right? So if, if any user violates a condition of the PUD, the city has the ability, in my opinion, to do what that sentence in red says, right? So that, including the landscaping and the lighting, all the other 19 conditions also have that unwritten ability for you to say, "This is a condition that we've implied, applied to you," and so you have that ability. So when my client, Seven Brew, opens and operates, there's a time period when there can be some congestion on the site, right? So it takes some time for the customers and for the employees to get used to the process. So I'm not a coffee drinker, so I've been informed about this. So what happens is, the customers, a new customer that comes to a new Seven Brew, they get registered and they get signed up to the loyalty program and so on. And so that first couple weeks where you're getting new customers, that process takes longer time, right? It might take a five or six-minute process because I'm signing you up, I'm getting your email, all the stuff that you have to do to become a loyalty customer. Once that's done, the process moves faster and there's less queuing. Similarly, as the employees become more proficient at making the drinks, because they're hired, they're trained, but you know, it takes repetition to get to a point where they're able to do that. My point is, based on experience, Seven Brew knows that the first few weeks can be a little congested. And they are concerned that, as written, that sentence could result in their $2 million investment getting revoked, and you know, they feel very uncomfortable.
Sorry, may I just jump in here? Because I agree very much with Councilwoman Littler, and I'm having, I would like to know, where's the data suggesting that you will not get funding if this is included? Have you been rejected in the past? Have you had clients rejected in the past? Because this other location on North Fairfield has been there more than just a few weeks. And I can tell you, when I go to the gym at 6:00 in the morning, I have a hard time navigating through there at 6:00 in the morning and navigating when I leave at 7:00 or 7:15, because it's constantly busy. There are people coming in and out. I've almost gotten hit multiple times based on the landscaping in that area. Now landscaping here is going to be different, but I don't think the chaos of getting in and out will be. And I have a couple other questions, too, Randy, when we get there. But I have a hard time believing funding is going to be on the table with this provision, because like you said, we have this opportunity at any time. But this is a sticking point. This is really where you need to be paying attention when you're developing this. So getting rid of just that, including the suspension and revocation, I mean, you're really not going to get funding for that?
I'm relaying to you the concerns that my clients had told me.
I understand the concerns. I'm asking you, as someone who does this, where's the data suggesting that it's a reality?
I don't have data to present to you. I will say that a big driver for the reason that this second store is being opening here in Beaver Creek is to address the congestion that we're seeing at the North Fairfield site. And that we anticipate that both will benefit, right? So that this new store will take advantage of customers that are on the north side of town and that we will have a reduction in the congestion that you're seeing at the existing store and that this store will benefit. And similarly, we'll have customers that are already registered and ready to go, and they'll be at this new site and take advantage of it.
I don't disagree with that. I think it would, it could alleviate. But you are, you are tapping into a completely new source of customers down there, that close to the base entrance. But your, actually, your, your comment actually raises more questions for me in the sense that there is a known problem when these places first open causing congestion. Is there any plan that Four Brew can come up with to alleviate that problem? Because in, in the diagrams, what I foresee is people entering the property from, coming, coming from the west on Colonel Glenn, making that right-hand turn to pull in, and as soon as traffic begins to back up onto the roadway towards Colonel Glenn, people trying to pull out of Seven Brew because they want to go down to the traffic light to make their westbound travel, they won't even be able to get out. So you would, without signage or people out there, I don't know if you're following me or not.
Yeah, I do.
But if you don't have somebody out there assigned to direct traffic, you're going to have gridlock, which will quickly back up out on the Colonel Glenn. All you need is one car out on Colonel Glenn, and you've got a problem. So is there, is there a plan in place to be out there with traffic control or the problem? Since it's a known issue that you, you said that they know that they have a problem with over-busy and cars backing all the way up onto the roadway?
They have implemented that in the past. When they have congestion, they can have, as I mentioned, they've got employees that are taking orders. They can also notify customers that, you know, the facility's full and ask them to pass on by. That's not their business model. We think we're on a low-traffic road on Germany Lane, and that the site's actually very well-designed for what you just mentioned, that we're furthest away from Colonel Glenn Highway and have a good circulation. We exceed your stacking requirement.
And I, and I appreciate the eliminating any entrances from Colonel Glenn, because I thought that would be, would have been a, a complete disaster, actually. I just have concerns with, with removing the language specifically, but also.
To your initial question, I'm sorry.
If, if, if it is a known issue, I also have problems with wondering if this property's large enough. I mean, I love the idea of cleaning up that intersection. I think that the property would, would brighten up and make that area look so much better, without a doubt. And I appreciate Four Brew wanting to expand in Beaver Creek, but I just don't know if that property is going to fit. That's all I have, Mayor, honestly. But thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kern.
I think I was thinking the same concern that Councilmember Littler was talking about, whether it's a legitimate issue of traffic backing up, as explained. And I'd certainly like to see that resolved before we move forward, that's for sure, if we can. That's all, Your Honor.
Schwartz?
Thanks, Mayor. I, I too share those concerns. As Councilwoman Garcia stated, I've had actually several residents talk to me about this location when it was advertised on the news for the exact same complaints that she has. They frequent the gym there, and during any particular hours, the individuals that I spoke to actually go in the evenings, and apparently there's maybe a happy hour or something that occurs, which also log jams the parking lot, where they're having to park in the adjacent shopping center and walk up because they can't even get to the parking lot to get into the gym. And so I too am concerned about this location and the stacking for the same reasons. I do appreciate the concern as it relates to the language. I'm neither here nor there. The applicant is correct in that we do have the ability to suspend or revoke, whether it's in there or it's not in there. So I guess I'm kind of apples to oranges. If you want to keep it in there, keep it in there. If not, we still have that ability, as I understand it. Is that correct, counsel?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. I do appreciate all of the hard work that has went into this, and I do appreciate coming with a plan on how to address it. I know that we were very emphatic that we had these concerns initially. I do think that this has made some progress. I just am still not completely on board that this issue is going to be addressed. The other thing, and kind of to address some of the comments that were made. The other thing, and kind of to address some of the comments that were made in terms of the registration process, I've been to Seven Brew once and that's why I didn't return is because I couldn't, the registration process, it took too long and I didn't have a menu to look at. And I'm maybe old school and need time to make a decision and so I felt rushed. And so when you have all of that stacking going on and people trying to make decisions, I think that only further exacerbates the problem. My question, all that to say, my question for Planet, or for Randy is, Randy, have we considered prohibiting a left-hand turn into Seven Brew? So when they come down, whatever that road is, Germany, and they can't turn left because I, I do anticipate that that's going to stack up onto Colonel Glenn very, very quickly. And so perhaps if we only had a right turn in and people not being able to left turn, that could reduce some of the traffic impact.
I mean, we, we didn't consider that. That wasn't looked at just because knowing the applicant, I mean, you're going to have people coming in from that side of Germany Lane, so they're just going to turn around and try to make a U-turn to get into the site. I mean, it's certainly something Council can apply on here. I mean, I would cer- I know the applicant would certainly have some comments on that if, if that's something you're going to move towards. I would just be concerned about cars. I mean, you've seen it at like the Speedway, we put no left turn and they just go over the curb. It's harder, we can't put the curb in the middle of the street. It would have to be on the site. And then to do that on the fly is problematic because I, I'd need to make sure that a firetruck can get in there depending on the curb width and angle and, and a trash truck could get in there. So I don't want to throw something on there that would preclude, would make it, so the fire department can't get in the site, so.
I mean, I'm just, I'm inclined if we're not addressing, we've got to address the stacking problem. I, and I don't know what other options we have because the site is just too small when I think about the number of cars and people who frequent this. I also share the same sentiments as Councilmember Little. While I do think maybe you're going to get some of your traffic and your people from North Fairfield coming down to this site, you are going to get significant base employees if we're, if we're ever allowed to go back to work again, to be in that, to be on that site. I mean, there is, I'm trying to think, I work right there. I mean, there's a Starbucks there, but I don't believe that there's a drive-through. You have to go inside. There's a Sheetz, but I, I mean, personally, this would be a better preference rather than having to run inside or go in to get gas station coffee. And so I do think that this is going to be a huge attractant to the base personnel. So I do, I guess I have a couple of questions for the applicant. One of those questions is kind of what Randy alluded to, would there be concerns if we limited it to a write-in only?
Yeah, we, we have talked with city engineering about restriction of driveways and that wouldn't be satisfactory to us if, if we couldn't turn left, basically have full entry into that driveway. That wouldn't be satisfactory. We, we've provided a lot of detail to staff and, and planning and engineering about other sites and traffic studies and 10,000 hours worth of video analysis and lots of things about queuing of Seven Brew. And, you know, we'd be willing to pause this if you think we need to continue to do that. We're, we're confident that our site circulation and stacking works.
Well, I mean, my only experience is the other one that we have in town and I, I'm confident that it is not working.
Can I ask a quick question about that?
Please.
How many cars can stack at the current Fairfield Road location?
I, I don't know. I'm sorry.
I need to know that answer. Because, I mean, that gives us a pretty good idea. And you guys have not lived up to directing traffic. I agree with Councilwoman Garcia. It's terrible. It shuts down that access road and it's going to happen here. So Randy, could you look back on that? That'd be nice to know.
Want to say 27, 28.
Yeah.
So 14, 13.
More than, more than proposed here.
If I may, Councilwoman Schwartz, I'm going to piggyback on everything that you're saying because I, I do think they're spot-on. The base is going to draw so much attention from this and there's no guarantee it alleviates on North Fairfield Road at all. But that's not the purpose of this tonight. But I, I think the biggest problem is, I see what you're saying, if you don't have a left turn in, you, you really have no access because no one's coming from Germany Lane to get there. They're coming from Colonel Glenn to get there. Is there an option to have, to widen Germany a bit, to have that left-in-only lane to try to alleviate some of that? I don't know if you could cut into your property to kind of extend, expand that, expand that a little bit? I don't think you could do it to the south because there's that Defense Research Association to the south, but to the north of Germany, I mean, is there a way to, sorry, standing council, city council manager, are we able to get that back up? Oh, it's Randy.
Sorry.
Thank you, Randy. But I didn't, I don't know if that's a possibility.
If you hadn't looked at that, I mean, it's possible that there's not a lot of right-of-way there. I wouldn't say that's out of the question. I, I don't know, is, is the answer. We, we've looked at a lot of scenarios and feel that the restriction for a right-only when you come from Germany to, is a good solution. And what that does is it prevents, when, when, if cars were making a left turn, they add Colonel Glenn from Germany, then they could stack up and prevent visibility from our customers seeing the customers coming in because it's a weird intersection and angle. But with the right turn only, that delay's not going to be there and we're not going to have left turns. But we, we can look at, at the turn lane.
Let me make sure I'm understanding this correctly. When you're, we're saying right turn only, we're saying right turn only from Germany into your property?
No, the, the
Okay.
Condition would be at the intersection of Germany
Right.
And Colonel Glenn, it'll be a right turn only.
Exit, right. But I'm, I'm talking about you have no issue about having a left turn into the property? But you're concerned that if we widen that road, it's going to block visibility?
No, no, I apologize. I confused you.
That's okay. It's, it's hard not to, sorry, Randy.
I was trying to say that the solution that city brought resolved the concern at the intersection.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
We're willing to work with you if, if there's an ability to widen and create the turn lane.
Okay.
I don't know the answer to that.
No, I do think there, there is a second part of that stacking onto Colonel Glenn which is people trying to get in. Not as much as it is people trying to get out onto Colonel Glenn, it's going to be people coming in and then back up on, on Germany Lane trying to turn left into your property. And I, I, I am concerned if we have, I doubt there's going to be a high volume of traffic coming in from Germany Lane, but they could cut off on Zink Road, come in Germany on the right, and then we have people trying to come in on Germany from the left on Colonel Glenn, it is going to back up. And who's going to be directing? Who gets to go next?
Yeah.
And if everyone's coming in from the right, who gets to turn next left? So I, I think this is, the more I look at this, the more challenging this is to me, that this is a big enough space.
Well, we, we have presented, and perhaps I didn't do a good enough job, I didn't anticipate that that issue would be the key issue. We have presented data about our trip generation and the stacking and none of the data we have, have presented or demonstrates that we're going to back up to Colonel Glenn Highway. So, but we can, we can present that information to you. I mean, we, we need to have your approval for a specific site plan and we, we think we've got a really good plan here for, for this site.
I would, I would be interested in seeing that data. I think that the turn lane is a creative solution. I don't know if it's going to fix the problem because there's not a whole lot of roadway there anyways. I mean, I don't, I don't know that that's going to fix the issue. I, I think that people would get used to it. If you can't turn right, you just got to turn in at Zink Road. I don't think, I think that's a reasonable solution. I'm not sure the adamant opposition to not allowing for that, I don't think it's going to impact any customer access. If people want coffee, I think they'll drive another 500 feet down the road, turn right and come around.
It's, it's just not viable. If we, if we can't turn left into the site and, and if that's the condition, I mean, it, it's just not going to be a viable property.
Yeah, okay.
It's a convenience business and if it's not going to be a convenient circulation. But again, we have studied this and we feel that this is a safe condition. I understand that you're being presented this for the first time tonight. We've milled this over for a long time and feel like this is a good design.
I don't, I don't necessarily think it's unsafe. I think it's going to create a ton of traffic congestion unnecessarily is my concern. I would like to see the traffic data to kind of help understand that. Are there going to be any other considerations taken as to like the happy hours? Are those going to be reduced? Are, I mean, the things that cause the influx of traffic and the timing, has there been any consideration to reducing those, eliminating those? I mean, I think that that's where you're getting a lot of the issues as well.
I'm keeping track.
Okay.
I don't have an answer for you, Schwartz.
Okay.
And then.
We'd like to manage and operate as close to our, our process as possible.
Yeah, understood.
So we're respectful of your, your questions and we'd like to not.
What does a site like that generate dollar-wise for your company?
I don't know that, I don't know. They don't share that with me, no.
Um, okay. I don't have any other question. I think you understand. The other thing that I wanted to address was Mr. Trout's concern. I do think if we are eliminating that left-hand turn, at least a temporary signage to go up to inform people that that right, that is a right-hand turn only is, is completely acceptable. I do agree with him. People come out there and try and turn left all the time, do turn left all the time, even though there is a light that would allow them to come out earlier. But I drive that every day and, and it happens. And so I, I agree with Mr. Trout's concern. I do think that if we could put in a temporary signage, at least until people get used to the new flow of traffic, that would be helpful. And that's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Duer.
Thank you, Mayor, and want to thank the applicant for ongoing investment in Beaver Creek and to offer hearty congratulations on a stunning success business-wise to Seven Brew. My family and I love Seven Brew. We've probably gone 20 to 25 times. We go on Seven Brew runs. My kids watch YouTube and they follow their favorite YouTubers who do Seven Brew runs as well. So congratulations. In comparing the orders per day to other locations in Ohio, West Virginia and Louisiana, again, a stunning success. So congratulations. To Mr. Burkett and Mr. Caro, Carrio, just thanks for your good work from the rezoning to now. I think there have been some very good improvements and I'm thankful for a, a fine eye on the I was at Seven Brew on Sunday. I have pictures. I was somewhere between number 35 and 40 in the stack, Sunday at 2:00 PM, months and months after opening. So I don't think it's anything to do with being newly in business. I think it's a product of your own success. It really is remarkable and that is excellent. But it backs up and what you need to know is that that location gets very dangerous at times. And that is someone that, like I said, loves Seven Brew. It is dangerous. I probably would have been to, had gone to Seven Brew another, you know, 10 times had it, you know, we've, we've left just because of the danger, the way it backs up. I am in favor of keeping condition number 18 because it holds your feet to the fire and I think there's something you could do to alleviate a lot of this and that's from a lot of experience of going. Some of your staff members do a really fantastic job of having people move up, others don't. And so I think if you were to hire someone specifically for traffic control to move people up, there are often six, eight, 10, 12, 15 feet between cars. And so while we can have a stacking plan like this, it actually doesn't look like it in reality. And that's why it spills out. And so to have someone near the front of the location pulling people up, making sure that there's a minimal gap between, I think that would go a long way and that's something you could do at the existing location. I mean, seemingly, the first location is very, very profitable, could fairly easy, easily hire someone to do that, especially around peak times. I have been at Seven Brew while Beaver Creek Police Department has, has had to show up more than once in order to try and get them to, to move forward. So I think that's a way of improving it. And if this does pass, I would strongly suggest it here because we have even less I want to bring up a point that Mr. Fountain made at the Planning Commission and that was related to the no bypass lane, the no, no drive-around. So at the existing location, there is an additional lane where if you want to get out or if there's some kind of issue, and so I want to revisit that. What's your policy? Because Mr. Fountain brought up the point of someone backing out. You know, there's an employee that's parked there, shift is over, or someone else that needs to park there. How do you get them in and out? How does that work in a location like this?
Oh, boy. Tired.
Jonathan Wilkirk in. Thanks for your question. My understanding is if an employee needs to leave, that they would have to go through the queue as well.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So how do they get into the queue?
I guess the same way as if there's congestion, they would have to wait for someone to let them back in. They'd have the reverse lights on and people would hopefully recognize as there's a gap that they would be able to get out.
In the Midwest, we're pretty polite and I'm sure someone would let them go.
We're polite in Beaver Creek than most places, I'm sure.
Yeah, I do. Hey, come on in.
Because this store doesn't have customer inside stores, right? I mean, so we anticipate very little walk-up. You can walk up. We don't expect that to be the case here. Most, those parking spaces are for employees. So I mean, it, they would have to wait and go through the queue if there's a line.
I think it reinforces my point to have traffic control at the front of the location. It's the type of thing that could be alleviated by someone just waving someone in or out. Second question is, what's your policy if there's a medical emergency in the line?
I don't know that. I don't know.
Yeah.
I can answer your question, but I don't know that, that question.
Because that's, I think, concerning. Not that it takes a long time to get through Seven Brew, but I have been there 15, 20 minutes when I am number 40 in the stack. And what is noteworthy of the 1,300 and I believe it's 86 people on that 326 orders per day, that's just one person paying. They could be buying, what, four or five drinks per order? So in terms of time and, you know, I have three children, so we will sometimes go through and buy five drinks. You times that by, you know, 30 people in the line, that can, that can take time. And your, the staff at the current location, they work very hard, they're, they're constantly moving. I have no critique of them, but that's just a lot for them to do. And if there's a medical emergency, it's problematic because there's really no way I echo Councilwoman Garcia. I'd like more details on the funding. I'd like to, to see an answer to that question because if that's the rationale for striking a sentence in condition number 18, I'd like to see the data on that. Seven Brew seems like a company, and I've tracked it, that's growing very, very rapidly. It seems like they could get funding very, very easily from a lot of sources. Now, I don't know that firsthand. It's a, it's a bit of a guess, but that's where the data will give us more information.
Taking notes, thank you.
Yep. To get to Councilwoman Schwartz's question, I get a fair number of coupons, buy one, get one, the BOGO in the, in the mail, probably because we go so often. But I do wonder if you even need them in Beaver Creek. I know it's nice to drive people to your location, but it's just maybe less is more in this circumstance. Maybe you don't need those extras. I know that sounds counterintuitive business-wise, but given, again, the statistics, your, your success compared to Lima and Huntington and the location in Louisiana. and the location in Louisiana, you add the base traffic, you know, I mean, this is, there are sets of problems. And so I'm very concerned about the left-in on Germany Lane. I know that you've said it's a bit of a non-starter and I can buy that because I, you know, I get the need for that in the business. But having sat there at the first location, people trying to turn left, it backs way up in both directions. And like I said, it is dangerous. There have been numerous near accidents that are right there with people getting frustrated and flying through when they can. And so I think a lot of it could be alleviated with hiring someone right at the beginning of the driveway that would usher people in. I think that would go a long way. But I think I need some convincing about the stacking. Again, as someone that really likes Seven Brew, I have deep concern about the safety of our residents and those that are working at Seven Brew. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Garcia. Anything else?
Yeah, I think the more I hear everyone else have similar experiences to me with the stocking and the traffic, it makes me think that we're not the first city that's complained about it. And if your client's worried about the funding, it makes me think your client has heard it before, too. So I'd like to see some, something saying to the effect that you can't get funding because of it. I would love to see another Seven Brew in Beaver Creek. I absolutely would. I don't drink coffee at all, never been there, but highly, highly popular. And I think that's fantastic. But this location concerns me a lot. And if this property is going to go there, I will not remove the last sentence of number 18. I'll edit it if it makes them feel better. But this is, this looks problematic. So I'd love to see the traffic data, especially given, I'd love to know the dates of the traffic data. I would also like to see similarly situated properties, given that we are closest to the largest single-site employer in the state that is all back at the office, allegedly, when they opened back up because traffic everywhere has increased with everybody being back in the office full-time on days. So I'm going to have to see some compelling information. But yes, thank you.
Where's my rails?
Thank you. I don't want to keep beating this horse, but there are a couple of points I'd like to make. I think it's important to keep that sentence in condition number 18 because we had the same discussion at your first location and we were assured that it would be taken care of internally by your staff if things came out onto the access road. And that's not happening. So I just feel like it's in writing, it's plain English and enforceable, whether it's in there or not, I get that. But it's clear. And I think that it gives us some opportunity to just hold your feet to the fire and say, guys, get out there. And if you have to wave customers by, you know, that's too bad. I'm sorry. I ultimately don't want that to happen. But for the safety of, you know, the pedestrians, might need to happen. I also agree with Councilmember Duer about someone monitoring that flow and that traffic. It makes good sense to pack them in there as tightly as you can. Mr. Burkett, did you find that number that we approved at the other location?
Yeah, it was about 24, 2024. Very similar.
Similar, a couple more than here.
Yeah, they were able to make out a U shape around the building rather than, rather than L shape.
Well, that's, thank you. That's good for me to hear because it's not many more, although you were 40 the other day. So I definitely think we've got some work to do. Quite frankly, Mr. Wilker, I don't really buy your argument about the first few weeks being the issue because you're always in search of new customers. You're always hiring new people. As a small business owner myself, that turnover, I understand it. So, you know, the time it takes to check in new customers, clearly in the first couple of weeks of a brand-new store will be more, but it's a perpetual thing as you work. So I'm not sure that that's the reason why cars would stack out onto Germany Lane in this case. I would like to say I agree with Mr. Trout. That right-hand only, albeit, would alleviate the issue for congestion on Germany Lane and help Seven Brew. I believe it causes questions and concerns and issues for all those other businesses that are on Germany Lane or people like I as well go to Home Depot. And I would take a left to get back to my house. So I agree, some sort of signage, I think, is really important if we're going to make that a right turn only. The only other question I had was for Randy. Did you ever consider in this whole entire process of cleaning up the survey? Has it, you know, this Germany Old Township Road, the survey goes out to the middle of the street, the boundary survey?
Yeah, I'll bring my glasses. I believe there was a condition about replant. Right.
Okay, so that'll clean itself up?
Yeah, the intent is to clean that and not have that, the old style of property line all the way to the center of the road.
Yeah, right, okay. Okay. Well, maybe a center turn lane on Germany Lane isn't such a bad idea, compromise to this issue. Because the bottom line is people are going to back up on that street. I mean... But a turn lane at least gives people the opportunity to drive by either direction.
I do agree, though, if you have that turn lane, you will need somebody mediating traffic because if you have people coming right and going left, have you waited for how long for a coffee? I don't know how nice people are waiting for coffee that they're going to let people turn left in front of them. So you're going to need someone directing that.
That's a good point.
Yeah, it's, yeah. All the people turning right are not going to let people turn left in front of them after you've waited 25, 30 minutes.
Correct. You went up to Zinc Road and went around, right?
On Sunday, for the record, I let the post on turning left turn in just to alleviate the traffic, but...
But not on Mondays?
Yeah, I do not think that we should eliminate that last sentence. Randy brought up police enforcement. And this is not the consumer problem. This is the, this is a business problem to deal with. If we let it go from here, I would want to make sure that we have conditions in there that hold the business plan to the fire, not people using the business. So I'm not going to give tickets to someone waiting in line, you know. That's all.
Thank you. I share a lot of the same concerns here. I know we've gone through this before with Chick-fil-A and with Dunkin' Donuts and we've had to do some real remediation there. And I have to be honest, I have not tried Seven Brew because every time I go by there, there's too many cars. I have to be honest.
Right.
I'm afraid if I do go in there, that I'll want to go back because apparently there's something in the coffee that makes people want to keep going back. What's the average turn time at a Seven Brew?
Josh Long from Casta. About three minutes.
Three minutes.
That's the national average. It's not specific to the other Beaver Creek store.
Okay. Yeah, I do, thank you for that. I do like the right turn onto Colonel Glenn. I know that most people are not going to adhere to it because right turns, if they want to go left, I want to go left, and they will, even if they have to go over a concrete because I've seen it happen too often. But I do like the fact that we're putting that there so that that would be the only way to get back on there. Is there some way to, maybe, I don't think this is going to be as big a problem as we've looked at because I don't see it, a lot of traffic on Germany Lane where we're going to be backed up all the time. I mean, I personally don't see that. I know it's going to be busy, but I don't think there's going to be a lot of people coming that are turning right into there. There will be some. But I don't think that's going to really create as large an issue. I am a little concerned with those coming off on Germany Lane, though. I don't, how much, Randy, do you know what the distance is from their entrance to Colonel Glenn on Germany Lane?
No, they've got about 260 feet all the way from the light to the property line. So it looks probably 230, 240, just ballparking it.
That's from Colonel Glenn on the west side?
Yeah, to the entrance.
To the entrance, okay. Yeah, I think a center turn lane there would certainly help with that, certainly the stacking part. But I do agree that if we're going to have people coming from both directions, there needs to be some sort of traffic mitigation. My concern with that is, though, after being someone that has directed a lot of traffic in traffic congested areas, is having an associate go out there and do that is not a good idea. I have a little problem with that, even with us, the police officers with uniforms on and COPPs when they're out there doing it. People don't listen all the time. And you're just standing there trying to do that. That's going to create a little bit of an issue. Now, at the front of the location, getting people moved in and maybe wave them by, I can see that. Although knowing some of these people around here, if they want their coffee, I'm coming in anyway. You know, so I'm a little bit concerned about that, so... There's several concerns here that I have.
Your Honor, do we have to act on this thing? All these questions have been raised. Are you going to be able to resolve them tonight? I think maybe we ought to...
This could be tabled.
Give it a chance to...
May I ask another question?
Jell a little bit, maybe bring it up the next meeting.
Randy, will there be any signage out on the corner by Zinc Road and Colonel Glenn saying, enter here for Seven Brew? Or anything like that, that would even alert people to know that they could either drive the extra block if they're coming from the west or they should turn in early if they're coming from the east?
Typically, we don't allow off, we don't have off-premise signage.
Okay. And because that's what the Valvoline, that's the new Valvoline that they approved? So they wouldn't be able to, yeah. So I wonder how many people are even going to know, especially the first couple of months. I mean, are they really going to know Zinc is really the...
You have to turn on Zinc.
That's the right route to go? Or that you can, or you even could turn on Zinc without any signage out there? I think that's problematic as well. I mean, Katie is great with social media, but I don't even know if we could get enough social media interaction that people would realize that's how this is supposed to operate. Thank you. That's good to know. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
I'm going to be looking for a motion. Able to get more information?
She has something to say first.
Well, would it be appropriate, would it be preferable for the applicant, for us to table this so that you can have some time to work on these questions and answers? Or...
I do agree with that. There are a lot of questions that really we'd like to get answers to.
I honestly think that's the only appropriate measure because I don't know if any of us would vote to move this to a second reading as is, without enough time, right?
It's just a site plan.
Oh, even more.
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure the applicant wants us to take a vote tonight.
Jonathan Wilker, you've raised questions that we don't have the data to respond to. I've said several times, we feel that we've put this through the wringer and we feel like we've got a very good plan based on your staff's input and the design, but clearly you have concerns. So I think tabling it is the only option at this point. I don't know that I'll be able to give you all the data you want, but we're going to certainly try.
And have you recorded the questions? I know they'll be in the minutes, but I just want to make sure that we have all those questions that you need to...
To the best I can.
Okay. Because I know the minutes will be there. We can...
And you can watch it on YouTube as well.
Always do.
I mean, I think it's great you guys want to come here, but, you know, we need to address some of the issues that have been concerns that were brought up tonight.
I understand. It's a tough site. I don't often work on a triangular-shaped property. It's a unique situation and we really are trying hard to address your concerns. So I appreciate you hearing us.
Mayor, I would move to table the Seven Brew Specific Site Plan Number One for PUD 25-3.
Second. Josh, do we have to put a time on that table till...
No, you can, you can put a time on table to the next meeting or table to a specific meeting or you can wait and have a motion to untable it when it's ready.
I think to give the applicant the time to do that, we'll just do that. They come back to us and when you're ready, and then do it that way. Okay. I have a motion and a second to table the specific site plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, get back to us with the responses and we'll certainly try our best to make this work. Ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. Ordinance 25-20.
Ordinance 25-20, an ordinance by the Beaver Creek City Council repealing the current Chapter 95 Parks and Recreation of the Beaver Creek Codified Ordinances and enacting a new Chapter 95 Parks and Recreation to the Beaver Creek Codified Ordinances.
And this is a second reading. Is there any update from staff?
Good evening. The only update is that we had Josh and his team make the updates to the one standard on the smoking and vaping as it relates to parks. Other than that, it's the same language as I presented two weeks ago.
I move to approve ordinance 25-20 as amended.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 25-20 as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Ordinance 25-22.
Ordinance 25-22, an ordinance by the Beaver Creek City Council establishing five new funds, specifically the Senior City Trust Fund, the Wordinger Park Long-Term Care Trust Fund, the CI Beaver Hall Long-Term Care Trust Fund, the Miscellaneous Parks Fund, and the Police Trust Fund in conformity with the federal and state laws and generally accepted accounting principles.
Okay, so historically, we've had a miscellaneous trust fund which started based primarily on park functions. Over the years, we've added other functionality to that miscellaneous trust fund. It's fund number 750. One of the problems you have in most accounting systems is that they track cash by fund and not by activity within that fund. So we operate fund, division, and then account codes. So right now, we have, what, three different police activities within what used to be a Parks Trust Fund. So what we're asking for is that we retain that original trust fund. It still holds certain kind of general-purpose miscellaneous items, separating out the police trust to a separate fund and then creating separate trust funds for the senior center, long-term care of both Wordinger and CI Beaver Hall, as well as retaining a miscellaneous Parks Trust Fund. So it's really more of an accounting function, keep us from having to track cash through spreadsheets and letting our accounting system do the work for us.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance, so if there's any public input and it would like to speak to this, please come forward, state your name and address.
Bob Trout, 2187 Bassett Court. I did read the proposal that you had in its entirety. I do think it's very good and very wise. The only question I have is... very wise. The only question I have is, is any of the funds that's in there, if it isn't used over a period of time, is it going to go directly back into the, to the general fund? If it does, then I have an issue with that. I've said my piece. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public portion of that. Counsel, David, you want to respond to that?
So, the trust funds are established to maintain that segregation so that they, those monies are used for those specific purposes. Now, I am not aware of anything that would allow that money to be moved to a general operating account, so it may be used to supplant expenditures of a general operating account, so I'll use the DARE program as, that's one of the activities that resides in the police trust. Obviously, they use other funding for that as well. So, you know, when, the idea behind the trust is to make sure it remains segregated and is used for the purpose in which it was given.
Anyone else?
This fund, 750, it will still exist?
Yes, 750 retains a couple of accounts, including the mayor's marriage activities, bike path, bikeway-
Bike advisory.
Okay, sorry. And those are the only two accounts that still have a cash balance. There are some older accounts that have had no activity in the last couple of years, but, you know, and again, as new things come up, you don't always need to create a new fund for one-off money, that you can use these trust funds for that purpose.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to move ordinance 25-22 to a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 25-22 to a second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 25-31.
Resolution 25-31 to authorize the application for the 2025 State Homeland Security Grant Program on behalf of the Beaver Creek Police Department.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The State Homeland Security Grant Program is designed to enhance the capacity of state and local jurisdictions to prevent, prepare for, respond to, and recover from incidents of terrorism involving chemical, biological, nuclear, or explosive weapons and cyber attacks. Beaver Creek Police Department is requesting approval to apply for this grant, which will provide funding for the purchase of vehicle barriers. These barriers, barriers will be used during public events to prevent unauthorized vehicle intrusions and provide additional protection to the public. This grant has a maximum award of $250,000 and is 100% reimbursable. Staff recommends council adopt this resolution, allowing the police department to submit an application for the State Homeland Security Grant.
Thank you very much. Anything from council members?
Appreciate you looking into this grant. It's important for our police and we're on a limited income as a city, so. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve, oh, go ahead, please.
Sorry, forgive me, councilwoman. Chief, yeah, great work on it. Do you have adequate storage space for these barriers? Can you speak to that?
We would have to use the assistance probably from the city garages, public service, because part of the, the barriers that we've looked into, you do have to buy trailers for them, so, yeah, we have to utilize some other city garage space.
Thank you.
I think something we really need, that would help out a lot in a lot of different instances.
That's just what I was going to say. I think, I think they're really important. I think that unfortunately, there have been a lot of tragedies over the past few years, and I think that these will help provide adequate security for our citizens as best as we can, and the fact that it's 100% reimbursable makes it even better. So, thank you, chief.
Thanks, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve Resolution 25-31 to a second reading.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 25-31, move it to a second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, chief. Twenty, Resolution 25-32.
Resolution 25-32 to authorize the application for the Bulletproof Vest Partnership 2025 Federal Grant Program on behalf of the Beaver Creek Police Department.
Chief, we get you again.
Yep. On October 20th, the Office of Justice Programs Bureau of Justice Assistance opened the grant period for the Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program. This is a federal grant to provide funding of up to 50% of the total cost of the city's purchase of NIJ-approved bulletproof vests. Since 2000, the police department has applied for this federal grant each year. To date, a total of $91,290.04 of federal money has been approved to aid in this purchase of essential, essential police equipment. We're anticipating purchasing 10 vests for a total cost of $17,552.30. The city share would be 50% of that total at $8,776.15. Staff recommends council adopt this resolution, allowing the police department to submit an application for this federal grant opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Your Honor, I move to approve 25-
Hang on just a minute.
I appreciate this grant. I actually wrote one of these grants back in 2002 to the sheriff's office, so this thing's been around for a while. And it's, it's a huge, huge benefit. Thanks for making sure of that, and I think we've done this every year, haven't we?
Absolutely.
What's the life cycle of a vest?
Uh, five years.
Five years, so this is something we need to do on a continuing basis. Yeah, thank you.
Move to approve 25-32.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 25-32. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, chief. Council time. Councilman Garcia.
Thank you very much. I guess first thing, coming up on November 4th, we won't see you before then, please make sure you get out and vote. A lot of important things going on, and as I realize there's an election coming up and I'm not in the cycle, I'm down to my last three meetings with two work sessions. I think meetings like tonight and some work sessions that we had like last month really make me appreciate my time on council, and I'm very grateful for everyone up here and all of your input. It's been, it's been a wild ride, but it's been really great. So please make sure you get out and vote. We have some great candidates, great ballots. I hope everyone does the homework to investigate what they're voting for on the 4th, and it'll be, it'll be a good night. I hope everyone has a great and happy Halloween at the end of the week. It looks like the weather is going to cooperate for the first time in, what, like three years now? So hopefully everyone has a safe Halloween on Friday, and thanks so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the Beaver Creek Quanas and the Lions for their trunk-or-treat event. I took Judson out there yesterday. Unfortunately, it was not very well attended, but fortunately for Judson, it was not very well attended because we came back with a load of candy, more than we will probably be able to eat. I think we could forego trick-or-treating if he would allow that, but I don't think that's going to be the case. I am also very optimistic for the weather. I saw the rain that it's supposed to end that morning, so fingers crossed that it stays that way. The only other update that I have is last week, we had a Region 14 meeting for One Ohio. The update is that we are going to be putting out the RFP, or the One Ohio is going to put out the RFP for proposals for the second grant cycle in December. That's just going to be your RFP. The funding inquiry is going to come out in January, so the process is a little bit different this year. They're going to put out the RFP like always. The funding inquiry is more of a short summary of kind of what each applicant is proposing. There's a review of those, and once those are reviewed, then those grant applicants will be asked to submit a full proposal, and so instead of getting tons of full proposals, there's kind of a first-up evaluation process. The one update, I think I may have provided this last month, but I think it's really important to highlight, is that there has been additional grant funding identified for this round, and as you may recall, Region 14 decided not to utilize all of its grant funding last, last year, and so in this round, we have about $7.7 million worth of grant funding available to us for our region. The next region that is even remotely close to that amount of funding is Region 1, and they have 5.2 million, so hopefully that means a lot of the grants will be coming closer to our region. We did work on setting priorities. Those have not been completely set yet, whereas last year, we kind of accepted applications across all of the priorities. This time, we're trying to be a little more focused in, in what we're asking for, so excited about this next round, and I think that we have a lot of lessons learned from the, from the first grant cycle. So our next meeting is November 18th, so I'll have another update after that one, and other than that, I have nothing else. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Littrell.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to vote, vote, vote. The other thing, I want to thank city, Randy, I want to thank you. You do a great job. I know, I can only imagine, I mean, I think you're up here every day giving us a presentation, and sometimes when things don't go quite right, I, I could only imagine, have to feel it just a little bit, you know, because I know you did a lot of work on that, and I appreciate it. I want to say I really appreciated it. Only do so much. I want to remind everybody that, I mean, everybody knows Halloween's coming, but the federal government let us down again and never did anything about daylight savings time, so everybody's going to have to change their clock again this coming weekend on the 2nd, so you may get an extra hour of sleep, but you don't really get it back whenever they take it away, so that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councilman Kern.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, I want to encourage all of our citizens that have children out on the street, be safe, 6 to 8 Friday, and have a, have a, have a safe Halloween, and also encourage people again to get out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Doer.
Thank you, Mayor. Special shout-out and thank you to Monica Jones and Katie Carrico. They came to a guest lecture at my, for my public administration class at Cedarville University, and they did a tremendous job. We now have a lot of specialists on the city of Beaver Creek at Cedarville University, so, but very, very thankful for their expertise and the way that they're just so giving of their time. Alongside Mayor Adams, we attended the ribbon cutting for Overbrook Landing in Beaver Creek Township, the New Health and Rehabilitation Center. It's its own major facility out there. I mean, it just keeps going, and it really is remarkable, and will provide excellent services to those in Beaver Creek and across Green County. Looks amazing, and thankful to the staff that gave us such a great tour and overview of the site. And Mayor, thank you for your words. I think very nicely done on behalf of Beaver Creek, even though it's in the township and connecting to the wider county. You did a, a great job of just expressing all of those components. I know that many of you have been wondering about the status of the Bubble Gun Blasters, my daughter's soccer team. The BSA season ended, and I've, I had a, I've had a handful of opportunities to fill in as an assistant coach, and they finished with a record of seven and one, so very nicely done, but more than wins and losses, the great development, learn to play as a team, and just very, very exciting season, very thankful for it. Had the opportunity to speak at a men's luncheon. It was a pig roast at Patterson Park Church. I spoke about persecuted church worldwide, and very thankful for the church, its leadership, and just what it does in the community, and for the men that attend, and the chance to get to know them. The Haunted Classic Soccer Tournament was recent, and so I want to thank everyone for just the way that, you know, they worked around the, the traffic upheaval. It brings a lot of commerce into our area. It really is a remarkable competition, and I had trash cleanup at the end of all of it, so very little trash despite walking the site multiple times, so thankful to everyone just taking care of and stewarding the area. And to just echo what others have noted, to, to get out and vote in terms of council races, township race, and the school board as well, as well as levy issues, so please vote, everyone. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Bales.
I want to wish my fellow council members good luck at the election next week, and all of the candidates. I'd encourage everyone to read up on them and cast a, an educated ballot. And then finally, just happy Halloween, like everyone else has said. Be safe on Friday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I made the mistake of the Haunted Classic of telling a good friend of mine's son, if he made it to the championship, I would be there. If you remember what Sunday was like, it was cold, and I'm glad they did PKs because that only meant I had to be there 10 minutes, so. I also spoke with the Air Force Sergeants Association. They asked me to come out and speak to their group, and they wanted to know what we can do to help support them and what they can do to help support us, so we came up with some pretty good ideas on that. I was able to attend to meet the candidate's celebrity server night at the Pizza Dive, and it was great to see, it was great pizza. If you've not been to Pizza Dive, you need to go to Pizza Dive and try their pizza, but all the candidates were there, and they were able to speak with a lot of different people, which was a really good opportunity for all of them. Had an opportunity to meet with the Miami Valley Foundation, was given an update on their new Care Flight helicopter. It's going to be an amazing thing, once they get their pilots back so they can fly it, because nobody's qualified to fly the new one yet, so I think they've got four pilots that have been sent off to school to do that. I was able to attend the ribbon cutting for a new defense contractor here in Beaver Creek, Two Six Technologies. Got a two-story building, there's not much in it, and I asked them what they do, and they say, "We can't tell you." So, you know, at least some of them, you can tell a little bit. They can't tell anything, so it should be interesting what they're going to be doing out there. Also attended the ribbon cutting for Overbrook. It's an amazing facility. I had an opportunity to talk to the owners and the staff, and I, I think that this is going to be a great addition to Green County and this whole area, and I was serious, even though it's in the township, it's going to serve Beaver Creek, Beaver Creek Township, Xenia, Fairborn, everyone around, so. I was honored to speak at the Wright State Dewali Festival of Lights Celebration they had last Friday night. That was, if you've never been to one of those, it's, I would recommend going to one of these celebrations. The Apollo Room there at the Student Center was packed full. It was just amazing how many people were there, and they're all dressed in their finest garb from India. I like to thank the Indian Student Association for inviting me, and the food is amazing. It's, I couldn't stay that night, and I'm really kind of glad that I didn't because I would have eaten too much, but it was great to be there. Also, I was a judge at the Lions Club trunk-or-treat this past Sunday. That was, it was kind of fun, and I agree that it was very well, not attended well, and I think that's because there were about seven others in Beaver Creek this weekend, so I just, it really interfered with a lot of them, and that's a shame because they, they put a lot of work and effort into that. Also want to take just a minute, my wife's birthday was yesterday, and I want to wish her a happy birthday. I won't say how old she is. I think she's 29, but we'll leave it at that. And then again, November 4th is Election Day. Get out and vote. There's a lot of, a lot of good people on the ballots. I echo what's been said before. Do your homework. Don't just go and vote for a name. Vote for somebody that you, you know what they're going to do and what they can provide for your community, your township, your school board, and there's a couple of issues out there too, so just go out and vote. And that's all I have, so. David, you get to do the manager's report.
Okay, city manager's report. Obviously, we've covered trick-or-treat very well tonight, 6 to 8 on October 31st. Again, just please be safe. Know that a lot of kids are out there running around very excited to get more candy. We have Coffee with the Cop on Tuesday, October 28th, from 8 to 10 a.m. at fresh time. Join Beaver Creek Department, Police Department. Relax, have some coffee, get to know your officers that serve your community, and ask them questions, and share your concerns with them. The event is free. Coffee is available for purchase. City's budget work sessions will be Monday, November 17th, and Wednesday, November 19th, from 5 to 7 here at City Hall. City invites residents to participate as we have our budget discussions with, with council, and if you haven't looked at our budget, it is a very detailed document, and we encourage you to, to view that- you to, to view that document and participate in our conversations. And finally, the new police department app is, been released, and excited to announce that. If you have any questions, contact the department to get information about community resources, stay up to date on police activities, and important safety alerts. The event app is available for download on the App Store and Google Play. Find it by searching Beaver Creek, Ohio Police Department.
Thank you very much. And I will say, I downloaded that police app, and I have gotten, I don't know how many notifications about freeze warnings. I mean, I think I get four or five a day, so it does work. All right, it's now time for citizen comments. Anyone that'd like to address council on any topic, please come forward, state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Bob Trout, 2187 Bassett Court. I didn't attend the last meeting. That was my fault because I thought it was a holiday, but it's not recognized. What I'm going to speak about today is the parks rules and update, read, read it in entirety, and I was a little bit disappointed that you have a blurb in there about smoking. And my concern is, we allow people to purchase cigarettes in Beaver Creek, we allow them to smoke in Beaver Creek. The other parks around, with the exception of one, allows people to smoke on their parks, and now we're going to get people that want to come in and, and enjoy it, and they're going to be breaking the law. I have a concern with that. I think we could put signs out there and said, that would say something along the lines like, "If you, if you smoke, be considerate." But I don't think we should alienate anybody that pays taxes to this, on the levies for the maintenance of that park. We should deny them their rights to enjoy it. So those are my concerns. The other thing is, is if a person is the kind of person that likes to take a bath twice a year, whether they need it or not, if they smell bad, just move upwind, that's all you need to do. That's the same thing. My parents were smokers. The rest of my siblings and everything, we were not. So I understand, you just adapt and you can move around there. We've been doing that forever, and I'm pretty old compared to the rest of you folks over here, with the noted exception, but like I say, we- But the thing is, is we can be flexible and still get in there. And I would like to also point out that you did not include chewing tobacco, and that's one of the grossest things out there, because people go out and spit wherever they're at, so. But anyway, I would consider striking that and just, if we need to put signs on our parks and say, "Hey, be considerate if you, if you smoke," and people, we don't give it. We're being too tight on our police department, because somebody's going to be calling them, and they're going to be having to come out there and respond. So I do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Seeing none, I will close the citizen comments portion, and I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to enter into executive session pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code for the Purpose of Consideration of Employment or Compensation of a Public Employee or Official.
I have a motion and a second to move into executive session. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bales.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Councilmember Dewar.
Yes.
Councilmember Littrell.
Yes.
Mayor Adams.
Yes, and there will be no decisions coming out of this, so in effect, the meeting is over. We will come back just to adjourn, so we are in executive session.